Good evening. Welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township, May 4th, 2023. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's been a little while since we had a Planning Commission meeting, and it shows that we've got all Planning Commission members here this evening. That's great. So, we have Ms. Hugo, Mr. Yoncho, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Bush, Mr. Jeremy Smith, our planning administrator.
Planning and zoning extraordinary, whatever it is, whatever title you want to give me, that's fine.
Yeah. And from our planning consultant, Kiffles Webster's, we have a new face, Andy.
Yeah, so my name's Andy Amott. I'm a planner with Kiffles Webster. I'm kind of filling in for Jill Bame. Jill is running just slightly late. She will be here in a little bit.
Very good. All right. Next item on our agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. Any changes?
None.
With that, I'd make a motion.
Chairman, make a motion to approve the agenda as listed.
A second.
All right, motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Anderson, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next is approval of the minutes from February 2nd, 2023. Mr. Durs.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the draft of the meeting minutes for February 2nd, and unless the Commissioner has a comment, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as stated in the notes.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Yoncho, to approve the minutes of February 2nd, 2023, as presented. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item is an opportunity for public comment. I don't... Is there anything here that we actually have a public hearing on? We don't?
No public hearings today, no.
If anyone would like to address the Planning Commission, we've got the new process. We've got a card on the table over here. We're asking, just from a record standpoint, if we get your name and address, if you want to address the Planning Commission. Is there anyone that wants to do that? Put a couple obstacles there, and we don't get anyone, so. All right. We will close public comment portion, move on to correspondence. I see we have something regarding a spring presentation?
Yeah, Ro just sent that in the mail to us the other day. They've got a spring class, if anybody's interested. If you're interested, sign up quick. I did see a note on there. They only have 50 spaces, so if anybody's interested, it's free, from what I see, so.
Okay, any other correspondence?
None.
No old business for this evening. That brings us to new business. SPR 1100, extension for site plan review for South Door Highway.
Yeah, so that is the old GBI location. They are in the midst of working through some items. You guys have given them preliminary site plan approval, but they're just asking for a little more time before they can really get started on it, so. Six-month extension.
They feel that's going to be sufficient?
That's all the book allows, and then after that, then they have to come back for full approval.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion on that item in Planning Commission?
I would make a motion to approve Site Plan Review 1100 and allow the six-month extension in the site plan for the gas station on Door Highway. Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Anderson, that was supported by Mr. Bush. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item, SPR 1094, also a six-month preliminary site plan extension.
Yeah, this is the Tommy's Car Wash, right there at the point. Same thing, they're just asking for a six-month extension. They're working through some things with the county, trying to make sure that they have adequate water and sewer. Working through some signage issues with me as well, but they're hoping to be moving along quicker now that spring's broke.
Any comments from Planning Commissioners?
Casey, no comment. I'll make a motion that we approve Site Plan Review 1094 for the six-month extension for their site plan review.
Support.
That was by Hugo. Motion by Mr. Anderson to approve the SPR 1094 six-month extension. It was supported by Ms. Hugo. If no discussion, a vote's in order. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is Master Deed Amendment for Grand Blank Enterprise Park.
You want me to start, or you want the applicant to start? Go for it. So, this is Site Plan Review number 1133. This is vacant land over on Enterprise Park. The apparent parcel number as of today is 12-27-676-004. Applicant is Wyn Cooper and Kevin Johnson. Zoning is light industrial. Mr. Cooper, Mr. Johnson, who are the developers of Grand Blank Enterprise Park, who are here today, well, Mr. Cooper is not, but Mr. Johnson is. They're requesting a change for the originally proposed site plan. Planning Commission approved the original site plan in 2021. The request to change would create a 20-acre parcel for John O'Sullivan Beer Distribution. Planning Department would support a recommendation for approval of this amendment to the site plan. This change meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, and the change is necessary for future development within the industrial park. And just so the full Planning Commission is aware, they have already submitted site plans, and they were preliminarily contingent-approved at Site Plan Review Committee earlier today. So, if this passes tonight, their site plan has already been approved, and they're ready to roll.
Mr. Hoffman.
I guess we knew changes were going to happen, you know, as things develop. One of the things that might have been nice in the packet is to say, this is what it was, this is what they want to change. I know it verbally says what is going on, but all it says is, this new one replaces the old one, so there's no real reference. So, can you tell me at least, was one parcel smaller, a bigger parcel cut in two, or?
So...
I'm in favor of it, but I just...
Yes. So, the, basically parcel five, if you can look on page C2, parcel five is the new parcel that is being asked to be created, but that, there was also, there was only five parcels to begin with, now there's six. So, they've basically taken what is now six, cut off a portion of that, modify the original parcel five, now we have a new parcel five configuration, and a new parcel six configuration.
So, parcel five came a little bit from four and six?
Correct.
Perfect. That's what I needed. Thank you.
Ross, is our township attorney need to sign off on anything here?
Attorney Laddie has already reviewed this and has no comments. It's pretty boilerplate amendment information, nothing that we haven't seen before.
Be able to approve at this level completely?
Yes.
No contingencies or?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Banderski?
I would make a motion that we approve the amended amendment to the Master Deed as displayed.
Support.
I'd kind of like to see a little bit from the applicant, if they could, before we approve this, but they're... Do you have any?
I mean, they'll pretty much give the same information I gave, but I mean, if you, that's your prerogative, if you want to have Kevin talk.
Come on up.
You drove all the way out here, let's hear you talk.
Oh, sorry, you have it. I'm all the way through.
You don't have to fill out a card, Kevin, you're all right. You're all right.
I thought you guys gave Mike a nice seat.
Same here, same here.
Simple is, there's, if you remember, there was a large piece that you see from the freeway, that was the old farm field, and that's just, that was one large piece. They recommended that we divvy it up into little pieces, like a neighborhood, just leave them large, and then just slice off. So, I think there was about a 70-acre piece that was the large piece. That wasn't Mike's, it was the neighbors'. I forgot her name, I should know her name.
Edelsberg, Edelsberg.
So, the Edelsberg was the 70-acre piece, and we left that the way it was, and just left it as one large parcel, not knowing how it might be used. And then, again, we've sliced off 20 acres, which leaves approximately 50.
All 50, yep.
Two acres left. That's all we did. And sliced off the piece near the wetlands to keep the nature in intent with the Fessner Bowman piece, which is kind of carved back there in nature, which is great. Looks beautiful this time here, it's spectacular back there by the pond, so hope that makes sense there.
Yep, it does, and I was just curious as to how the building's going to be oriented on the partial and stuff.
Do you have any conceptuals?
I do, yeah, in the car.
Wait.
No, don't worry about it, don't worry.
Sure, I got, no, I got my site, I got my site plan right here. Yeah, so we're going to do the same thing that we did with Fessner Bowman, we're going to use the wetlands, we're going to tuck it up in there, and carve the building around that, and use that to their feature. They really like, they even talked about having a patio out there and a little barbecue, and using the nature as, I never thought that this would be such a, everybody's always trying to get rid of it in development, now I've got two people that come along and go, could we be there? I'm like, this is great.
It's a great location.
It really is, and so...
I want to know what I'm looking at.
No, you're good. So, they're going to tuck it, basically, if you look at the north piece, which I call the Mike's Not Piece, but the northern piece, they're going to stick it as close to Mike's tree farm as possible. And we've been replanting a lot of the trees, Mike, we got 50 or 75 trees allocated to plant this, replant this spring with that nice guy last year, so we said we'll plant as many as we can.
You've done that so far, so...
We're continuing to do it, so, again, if J.C. can get the guy to get out there and hurry up and get them planted, we're going to relocate as many trees as we can, in the spirit of things.
And so, you're going to utilize the existing pond, low area?
Yeah, we're going to use the existing, exactly.
Part of the wetland and mitigation and...
Absolutely, yeah. So, it's been good that actually it's worked out the way that the township wanted, and Mike, in honor of Mike, and we're going to plant some big pine trees up at the front on Balden Road, and try to make that a mature look, so.
Jill, parcel number four is still marketable and?
Yes, so there should be two little pieces left on Enterprise Drive, one closest to Balden Road, so if you, you know, the part that's on the east, those two are gone, there's a piece up by, closest to Balden Road, by the bridge, and there's a little piece on the curve, maybe five, six acres left.
Seven.
And then, whatever's left on the, on the, on the north, hoping to, again, continue to hopefully bring it on, motor supplier, somebody here in Tennessee County would be outstanding, hopefully.
And hopefully, we don't have to do another amendment, maybe somebody takes the full vote, and we don't have to amend that.
That would be great, right? So...
Okay, now that I've seen the little orientation, I was going to send the property, I was going to look, I'd be ready to make adjustments.
All right, so I think we had a motion by Mr. Banderski, direct support by Mr. Johnson, to approve the revisions to the Master Deed Amendment, and I also heard a number 1133. Is that associated with, what this is identified with? I didn't see a number anyplace, but I did hear, I thought I heard.
Yes, Site Plan Review is number 1133, yes.
Your 1133. Any further discussion? If not, vote is in order. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is text amendments. Andy?
I'm going to lead with the graduations clause.
Oh, congratulations.
Adios.
Have a safe trip.
Good luck, thank you.
So, we're back to text amendments. I know that's everybody's favorite topic, but we've got a few on the docket tonight that we want to discuss. We'll start with the zoning dated March 30th, 2023, zoning amendment cleanup items. So, what this is, is, so the two site plans that we gave the six-month extensions to, what we want, what we're requesting is that the Planning Commission change the text amendment to give me the administrative approval to do this, so they don't have to come before the Planning Commission to be approved again. You've already approved them once, no sense in coming back to you. I think that's kind of redundant for a six-month extension. Now, after that six-month extension, obviously, they would have, out of time, they would have to come back and resubmit the full site plan process. So, I'm just asking that preliminary site plan and be amended to give me the administrative authority to grant the six-month extension.
I'm seeing section one here, the red text. One extension up to six months, maybe, oh, by the Planning and Zoning Department, one additional six-month extension may be permitted by the Planning Commission. So, we go to you first for the first six? Is that how that's written?
Oh, yes, you're right, I take that back. So, they would come for me for the first six months, and then you could grant them another six months after that, if need be. That might be... Either way, however you would like to do it.
I'm just asking.
Makes sense.
I have no problem with that. If, usually, you know, 18 months is sufficient, but if they need 24, maybe that's, that's why we leave it with the Planning Commission, and they can approve that. So, that way, they'd have two years total before full resubmital.
Anybody have any comments on that?
We give them the first approval.
We would get, I would get, you give the first one for a year, I would give the next one at six months, and then you would give the final one at six months.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just want to make sure that we are notified at each step of the way about, at our regular meetings, about those extensions and so on.
If I grant one, sure, yeah, mhm. I would make that as part of new business or old, I'd probably make it part of old business, and just say, you know, this, those two would have went under old business, I had, you know, given them administrative approval for six months, and then you would see it again if they needed another six months.
And then, we'd be able to have some input onto what was going on with those extensions?
There would be no changes at that point, that's, this is just giving them more time. No changes would be made at that time.
But we could have some discussion after the extension.
After the two-year mark?
After the 18-month mark.
There's no changes are to be discussed.
It would come back here, just a matter of...
They would have to come back, but are you asking if you can make changes at that point?
Or have a discussion after the, because it says, "One additional six-month extension may be permitted by the Planning Commission." So, we could have a discussion after that 18-month to extend that to the 24th month?
Right, but all you would do is make a motion like you did today, there would be no changes, is, I just want to make sure we're clear.
There'd be an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant.
I mean, you could, but I mean, there's, there's, there won't be any changes made those, I guess is my point. I just want to make sure we're all clear on the same page.
They're not coming back to add 3,000 square feet to the building.
But, but the Planning Commission could have a yea or nay vote?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, to give the...
Okay, that, great, that's fantastic.
Yeah, they'll have to give us, give you proof of why they need the extension, so yeah, you could, if you decide not to grant them the other six months, that's, that's your prerogative, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's great.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Anything we need to do with that, or are we going to take?
I just, I just want to know if everybody's okay with moving that forward to next month as a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we have a public hearing, okay.
Yes.
Census, yes?
Yes.
Yep, so we'll move that one to public hearing next month. The next one is the one dated April 7th, 2023, electric vehicle charging station ordinance, and we'll let Andy handle that one.
Yeah, so I'm happy to be here to discuss this with you tonight. The main point of this potential text amendment is just pretty much getting sites and getting infrastructure ready for EVs when EVs, when electric vehicle charging becomes a far more mainstream, far more regular on every site, site element. So, right now, the biggest thing is, really, if you flip through the text, the biggest, the most powerful item, I would say, out of this proposed amendment, as we've provided the text, is the very end, the amend section 5.15, and that's just to put in some electrical infrastructure when there's new parking lots built, just to get vehicles, just to get charging stations ready. It's not actually requiring a charging station to be built, but it's just requiring the electrical infrastructure to be in place, so that the parking lot does not need to be ripped up, and electrical lines run under the lot at a future date. So, it's just getting the capacity in place, but not really, not really compelling anybody to put in a charging station yet. Also, broadly, the language that we're proposing in terms of just the use standards are, we want to make sure, and this is just from a staff level, or from a planning consultant level, is, our idea is to make sure that these electric vehicle charging stations are allowed accessory uses pretty much anywhere. So, yes, no, you won't be able to have an electric vehicle charging station on a residential property for, you know, for anybody to come in and use, you know, yes, somebody can put the infrastructure in for like a type one or a type two level charger, kind of the lower intensity chargers in their garage, but the for-pay chargers that you see at, you know, Myers and Walmart these days, those will be only allowed on commercial properties, non-residential properties. So, we wanted to just make sure that this is clear, that, you know, a big box store putting in electric vehicle charger stations, you know, isn't going to be denied because of some sort of discretionary reason, essentially. And then, there's a few other site standards. Lighting is required, so if charging is being taken, is taking place at night, that area needs to be lit, because people will be using it more, just for safety. Also, some equipment standards and protection, those are just proposed to just be a couple little site standards, such as bollards to protect the infrastructure from being hit, pretty much, yeah, safe, you know, pretty much making sure that the infrastructure doesn't get damaged from an errant driver. And then, posting of signage, identifying the voltage and amp levels, and then also just kind of indicating that the space is for the electric vehicle charging purpose only. We don't want to make, we don't want to have, you know, regular cars parking in one of these spaces, and then causing some sort of a parking lot organizational issue. And then, also, just the broad theme of the fact that such electric vehicle infrastructure needs to comply with all electric codes. So, that's kind of the language that we're proposing. Again, the broad, broad theme is just getting the township ready for this type of infrastructure to start to proliferate more as we proceed.
How do you address somebody not just parking in a space and going into the store? You mentioned that, but...
I think that'd be a police issue, wouldn't it?
I think, I think it would be a township enforcement mechanism. I don't know if police enforces bad parking in general.
Well, and then you've got the issue of, if it's a private parking lot, do they really have, how much authority does the police have on private parking? So, that's...
I just, I witnessed this, someone came to me and said, hey, you know who parked here? They parked in front of this, this charging station, and I'd like to charge my vehicle, but I can't.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
It's a good point, and I think that's why, yeah, sorry.
Suggestion, maybe they should have a sign saying that, you know, this is only for charging, other vehicles will be towed, or something like that.
Yes, and that's definitely one of the standards in that subsection D.
I don't know.
It is if it's a private lot. It is if it's a private lot.
It would work if it's a private, yeah.
Private owner can put up that sign and tow a car.
Has to put up signage, though, you can't just tow it will, you have to have a signage, proper signage showing where it's towed, that it can't be...
Yeah, towed by, blah, 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 with a phone number.
Correct, so they know where it got towed to, so that could be part of what we require for this.
Right, for the sign.
Yeah.
A good suggestion.
And I would say they should be marked on a site plan, so whether it be a site plan that's approved by you, or whether it's something minor that Jeremy might review, or, and I'm sorry, I'm still getting my gears, and my, trying to get accustomed to your ordinances, but I would say the approval authority should make sure that it is on a site plan for a commercial property, because then you might be able to enforce the same way you enforce on somebody errantly parking over grass consistently on a site, or whatever kinds of bad parking practices are taking place on a site.
May I remind the Commissioners that to speak? Please address the Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson wanted to say something there. Your face was a little...
Yeah, I'm working, I'm processing.
Oh, okay.
I guess I'll ask, and this might be an ignorant question, but if every commercial building is going to be required to essentially, potentially be viewed as a fueling station, how are we protecting ourselves from what was not intended to be a fueling station turning into a fueling station? Does that make sense?
Like, you're turning a plumbing business into, now they've got four or five EV charging ports.
Exactly, and people 24/7 sitting in front of a plumbing station, or a plumbing company trespassing.
Well, but do they, do they have switches where the, if you want, I guess, is there a switch where the business could shut it off at, let's say, 5:00, and not let those stations charge?
Good evening, sorry for my tardiness. I, it would be interesting to see if businesses would just allow that for free, or if a business would charge for that service. I haven't seen, like, a plumbing, because what, what would attract someone to use that charging station?
Well, right now, the lack of charging stations.
Right.
Right, so, but that means they have to sit there, and are they going to sit there in the parking lot of a plumbing supply company, or are they going to go where there's a restaurant, which might not be bad, because it attracts patrons to the restaurant, and it gives people something to do while they're waiting for their car to charge? We're seeing more of that. We had one recently in a community where it was a gas station, but they were right up against the trail, a trail, like a shared-use regional trail. So, that seemed an interesting one, because then people could park, and they could go for a little walk on the trail and come back. We actually, in that case, made sure that they had enough parking for the gas station, and treated this as extra, because clearly, people weren't going to hang around the gas station if there was a trail right there. He, and he would allow that, as a business operator, allow someone to park and use it, and then go off-site, because he knew that people would come back and probably get a bottle of water, or snacks, or whatever.
Right, I just, yeah, Mike, the only reason I'm bringing this up is, there's a rapid charger in Bay City at the Meyer, and Friday afternoon, about 3:00, it is literally a parking lot party.
Wow.
With everybody driving north, they all stop there to charge their vehicles, which is fine, because they have the infrastructure to be able to support it, they have a very large parking lot, you know, there's nice chargers there. But I know that, like, when that's full, if there was a business down the street that wasn't set up like Meyer is to be able to offer EV charging, and they just popped up for-profit chargers in their parking lot, how do we keep that from happening, and dealing with traffic issues, and those sorts of things?
So, I think that would be what we would want to be looking at, or what are the concerns that we have, you know? You know, what, about having a business like that have these chargers on site, what are the problems that could arise that we'd want to think about ahead of time and try to offset that with standards?
I guess I have a question, Mr. Chairman. For Jill, could there be a trigger point where we would recommend, and then the trigger point would be where we require, not, maybe not in this memo or this, this publication, but is there a point where we would have a trigger point, say, let's say, Myers did want to come to town, they would be required X amount of parking spaces, but if a new plumbing business came to town, if they wanted to have it, great, but we wouldn't require them to have it?
Right, so there's a question, would we require EV charging stations right out of the gate for any new business that comes in?
That's part of the question.
I think that's part of the phasing, and, and a lot of communities aren't doing that right now. They are doing it for, like, multiple family, or they're saying, at least you have to put in the conduit, you've got to be prepared, so put in all the infrastructure for it, and that way, someday, if your residents want it, or your, your employees want it, it's there, it's easy for you just to install it later. So, that's probably a good first step, is just to require the infrastructure for new, new construction.
Like we have built into this memo today, and then...
So, this is a lighter version.
Right, so then at a later date, when we get more call for this, we can go back and amend this, this ordinance, and then we can really dive deep into what may be a trigger point.
Right.
Okay.
And if, and if we do start to see, you know, new businesses coming to town and saying, well, gee, you know, maybe we'll add a few more spaces for, if they're starting to do it, that they're going to charge for them, then that might be something that we want to take a look at, like, what are, what are we, what are these people going to do while they're waiting for their cars to charge? I don't think we want to see people just hanging out in their cars if there's nothing to do on the site, but if it's something that they're using this as maybe a draw to a restaurant, or to another, like, a shopping area, that gives that, then you're getting a little bit of a benefit, too, because maybe you're doing some, you know, economic development or attraction, business attraction that way.
The only other comment I'd make, looking at if we're going to go down the EV charging station road, is hazardous materials?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Continuation of your question.
Thank you. Is, I come from an EMS background, ambulance, transport and service, and car crashes and all that. Right now, we're having a real big problem with these vehicles catching fire, being a fire hazard while they're charging, and I would really consider looking at the type of business that we're allowing these charging stations to go into, and then how close they are to the structure, and then what type of hazardous materials they might contain inside the structure, because you cannot extinguish these fires once they start.
I agree with that, and I've heard that concern about them catching fire, so I think maybe we can get some input from fire department on, we don't know what their thoughts are, what fire, what code is, but then I think having a distance from that building is a good idea, too.
Yeah.
And just in time, and then it can, you can always change that when technology gets better and...
Right, right.
Do that happen.
So, as far as requiring the, any, if I'm reading this right, it's, we're going to say, moving forward, any new buildings have to install conduit and...
The infrastructure for it, yeah.
Electrical services for a future charging station.
Right.
I mean, is that something that we want to do for every business, given the fact, I mean, even like a hazardous materials company, or that? I mean, I could see for general, like, commercial shopping districts or those sorts. I don't necessarily think it falls across the blanket statement for any new commercial development.
They don't have to, we're not making them install the charger.
Right.
But if they install the conduit, then if it's a business that doesn't want to do that, because they have hazardous materials and they don't want to be at risk, then they don't need to do it. But if they have employees who want to have that, and they move them off to the side of the parking lot, then they at least have it there, or if that business changes in five years, then they still have that opportunity, because it's already there. They don't have to rip up the parking lot to install those things.
Gotcha. I think I had Mr. Yacho next.
I'm happy to agree with the idea, concept of installing the conduit for future installation. That's a relatively cheap option for companies. They're going to have the ground exposed, they're going to be able to do that, and, and it's just generally a good idea for whatever type of system you're going to install in the future.
Mr. Chairman.
It could be for sprinkler system, it could be for anything, but to install those conduits under the other infrastructure is a great idea. You know, our technology is changing so fast, and even the opportunities to generate electricity is changing fast. We don't know where the EV market's going to go, we don't know where the charging systems are going to go. Right now, as we can see from the presentation, the 440 or three-phase energy is a very fast charging system, and, and that's cheaper electricity as well. I've, I have experience in, in those areas, and I think that those may even spread into some areas that might be residential, such as apartments, condominiums, where people might be able to have increased value in their living space by having those fast charging mechanisms. So, I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to accommodate all that new technology that's coming around and not hamstring ourselves by having requirements that are less than flexible for those developments, and so...
So, it sounds like you're suggesting just conduit only.
Conduit only, and possibly even tabling this motion.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to make a comment, try to help Mr. Johnson, when he asked a question, do we really want to require conduit? I'm for requiring it, and I don't think we're really asking an applicant to spend much additional money, because we've got, we've got conduit under those parking lots for lights, so it's as simple as using that same conduit that they use for the light, and just extending it maybe a little bit in the future if they're going to do that. So, there may be a few sites that don't have conduit, but I'm saying 90% of them already do, and we're not really asking them for anything additional, so I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson? The, the way this is worded, unless we changed it and I was zoning out, is for a minimum level two EV equipment, to me, that says a 240, not just conduit, but you're running a circuit with 240 volts to a particular location in a parking lot, right?
Kind of sounds, that's how it's written right now.
Yeah, to the site.
If it's just conduit, I, yeah, that, I mean, I think that would be okay. That's easy. The 240 volt circuit would be for a moss, that's, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Two things on that, yeah, as, if I were a business owner building it, and, correct me if I'm wrong on this, I, I'm required to lay the conduit, I should be, should be required to provide the adequate, at least space in my circuit breaker to accommodate that at the time, that'd be part of the approval, I would imagine. You're going to add the conduit to your home, you're going to expect that somebody is going to use it, you're going to put in a big enough breaker panel to handle it, I would think. My other thing, to be honest, I thought, do we really want to require this to every business? And I thought, if I were building a business, yes, I would, because if I built my grocery store right here, and I ran the conduit, and I have charging stations, and the guy who builds a restaurant across the street, he doesn't, I don't want all his customers parking in my parking lot. If we make them all do it, that's going to eliminate that problem as well, but if you want to maybe make it clear on the, provide the conduit and electrical capacity to support these future things, that's probably an important part.
So, you're suggesting to provide the capacity, but not actually do an installation?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm going to put the conduit in, I'm going to have a big enough breaker panel, no breakers in it, it's blank.
No wires, no breakers.
No wires, no breakers, but it can be easily added that way. Kind of, kind of get to just, I'm saying, I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to...
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Mr. Banderski?
Building up on what Jay said, when you're running, if you can run conduit or whatever, you need to specify, I think, from a safety standpoint, it can only come so far to the building, or it has to be so far from the building to where the charge is going to be. I mean, there should be something in there to specify concern that Jay raised about fires, et cetera. So, where in their proximity, so we, so we have to be careful on some wording to that effect.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, my comment to that would be, that's more of a building inspector, electrical inspector question, when they do the building plans. Site plans, we don't ever see, we see photometric plans, but we don't ever see an electrical plan for the whole site. So, us requiring that, I think, is a little bit out of our purview. We can have language in there that it has to be approved by the electrical inspector per building code and, and all of that. I don't, I don't have a problem, I think you're, you're on to something, but as far as you or me approving that, we don't ever see those plans, and even electrical boxes, too, but if we can show, you know, you can show, we can maybe require per the site plan, where they are running the conduit on a site plan page, that, I'm okay with that, but as far as, that's, that's more outside of, I'm not, I'm not an electrical inspector, I'm not a building inspector, so where it has to stop and start, and size of it, that's, that's out of my purview, I think.
Could there, could it be in a recommendation stage? You know, that doesn't define required, but, you know, it's recommended that it be x, x distance.
Or that it, that it meets state building or state electrical code standards?
Right. I think that's a good point.
Do those standards right now address chargers?
No.
No?
I don't think they do.
Because they're still working on the, I do know they're working out of the 2015 building code right now, so they, they haven't even come out of that yet, so probably not.
I just wanted to kind of second Jeremy's thought there, because, I mean, it sounds like it's more of a building code issue, which obviously we don't get involved in, and the technology presumably is going to keep changing. I mean, this is such a new, you know, technology to begin with, that I don't think we want to be too specific in our, you know...
Mr. Johnson? So, if the building code isn't updated, and there's no safety regulations that have been set up yet, how do we require a business owner to put in circuitry when that hasn't been established yet?
I don't think we're requiring a circuitry, but just making it easier to be able to add the charging station in the future, but I, I'm not so sure that we can't have some sort of requirements about separation from buildings or something, I don't know. It sounds like this one isn't ready to...
Well, but that, and that's another, making a line that says, you know, meets state building and electrical code standards...
Problem is, it's not addressed in the building codes yet.
I understand that, but it, it takes the onus off us, and it puts it on the electrical inspectors, so that they have to, they're going to, they, there's already charging stations out there, so they have to address this at some point, some way, somehow. I don't know how they're doing it, but...
We can do some research and find out.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
What's being done.
All right, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I'll try to wrap this quick, because, again, I want to, we're not electrical engineers, we're not firefighters, I don't want to try to sit up here and decide what's correct and what's incorrect.
Excuse me, I'm...
You know, knowing your background, sir, I respectfully, yeah, you, you know way more about this than I do. My, my point is, there's a lot of buildings in the county township right now that have charging stations, and I don't want to say that they were inadequately placed, or anything like that, we're, we're opening a can of worms here that we're not qualified, with the exception, maybe, Mr. Banderski, to approve. I'd rather just say per current electrical code, or per current building code, period.
Mr. Banderski?
Yeah, could I suggest that Jeremy talk to the electrical inspectors or the building and get their say on it, and then we come back and address this at another meeting?
Sounds like we're not ready.
Just so we're not talking and...
I think there's some, I'm making notes, and I think Andy's making notes of how, and we'll, the three of us will talk on how we can, because we won't have this republic hearing next month, we'll just, we'll do another discussion on it after we've done some digging on it.
Bush, you had a final thought here?
Just, really, more on what Mr. Anderson was talking about, how we might be a little ahead of the game. Some sites that we approve are not very big, so you put a building on in a parking lot, and it's pretty much the lot line. So, within the last month or so, there was a big electrical EV fire at Forge Plant, one fire, one truck burnt, and three more got burned. I was a fireman of 10 years, Larry, those electrical EV fires are pretty good.
Sure, I'm not, you know, if you get, if you get some wind, you know, how small of a site do we want to require an EV station to be, no matter how big that site is, you're going to have a chance to be struck by it.
So, yeah, I think, I agree with Mr. Anderson, we're kind of ahead of the game a little bit.
Ms. Coulter?
Yeah, I had another suggestion, which is a different topic altogether, so, I go ahead and finish this one.
No, I think, yeah, we still want to talk about the charging stations, is it something different than that?
No, I mean, it's on the parking, it's section three, subsection A1, it says, electric vehicle charging station space may be included in the calculation for minimum required parking spaces. I would suggest we change may to shall, so that, and the rationale is, I think our minimum requirements for parking tend to be very generous, and so I would prefer to see if they're, you know, for electric charging stations to be included in the, what we call the minimum requirements, which I think are more than sufficient, and that's it.
Ms. Yu, go with it.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to mention, last night, or no, I don't know what day it is, this Thursday, Tuesday night, at the board meeting, we actually had a presentation by the fire department, and Chief Burdette indicated that these vehicles, these electric vehicles, if they were to attempt to put one out, it would take six hours, but if you just let it burn, he said that it would only take three hours for that vehicle to burn.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Yacho, did you have something else?
Yes, you know, I think that there's so much going on here with the EVs and the EV charging and so on. I'd like to see some analysis from what other communities are doing, and, and what the, what the feedback is from those communities, because, you know, we, we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
But we, we should have the opportunity to benefit from what others have done before us, and I'd like to see that information before I make a decision.
And we do, just so, you know, we always do look for best practices, we don't generally just make stuff up.
Oh, no, I, I, no, pardon me, that's not my implication, that's not my implication, I just...
We do have, we have several, yeah, we have several communities that we can, and some that have done it, have had it for years, so we can actually even reach out to them and ask them how things have been going, because they've had it for years. So, we'll find out, and we'll bring some stuff back.
So, we're going to get some...
But those are all really good comments.
Good discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, one other suggestion, kind of piggybacking off what Dolores said, instead of changing, and I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't say shall, or must, instead of may, but instead of being part of the minimum, I'd like to see maybe, in this infancy stage, maybe kind of taking a look at, you know how we have minimum requirements for ADA spaces? You have so many spaces as a whole for, required for the site, and based on that, that tells us how many spaces they have to have for ADA parking. So, in its infancy now, you know, not, we're not going to do 100% EV in every parking lot, but if they have 100 spaces, they're required five ADA, or whatever the book says, there's, there's a table in the book that gives us how many ADA spaces they have to be as part of that 100 that they're required. So, just a suggestion.
Sounds like this one's not on next month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just other things that I would like to know, do other communities maybe say what type of business they're parking at, whether they can be parked there for a longer period of time or shorter period of time? If it's at a barber shop, you're only going to be there for 15, 30 minutes. If you're at a nice restaurant, maybe it's going to be an hour, two hours. Do, if it's an hour or two hours and your car charges in 45 minutes, do they get a little buzz and you got to move your car to get somebody else in there? I don't know all the nuances of this. I don't know all the nuances of this. I don't have an EV car. I think there's a lot of questions that I would like to kind of know.
I don't, we haven't seen anything like that where it's by business. It's been pretty much like business to business making that decision. Like, a lot of businesses are just doing it without charging people for it. But I can see definitely that moving, you know, once they get more popular, to get people moving out of those spaces, now we're going to charge you if you're going to park there. And the business might do that. That's a kind of another topic, even beyond like what we were just doing with this. But it's probably something that's coming.
With that being said, through the chairman, I would say that, you know, at a gas station, you're in trouble if you get in the car, let alone leave the premise to go walking on a trail while your car's filling up with gas. So I kind of don't understand why EVs are allowed to just walk away. Is there a certain time where, hey, you're not supposed to be without, I mean, further than eyesight of your vehicle? I'm sure there's a little app on their thing that says, hey, you got trouble. But if you get that and you're an hour away, how are you going to be able to get back to do anything about it? I mean, is there requirements that says you have to be within a certain area?
That, I don't know, but I can look up. I know that some of the gas stations that we've seen that are installing them are ones that also have food, maybe a place to sit down. And so they're doing it initially, at least, as a way to attract business. So they might have other ideas about how to get people out of there. And if they linger, how do you tow someone's car because they left the premises?
Brought up, like, if it's operating all night, you know, what's to say I don't drive my car up there at 6 o'clock and park it there all night and let it charge and then I'll come back and get it in, you know, the next morning?
Right. And it seems like it would be a property owner issue, that they would then, if they want to have someone towed, that's up to them to have someone towed. If they want to allow it, maybe they allow it. If it becomes a problem, maybe they take it out.
Okay, one last comment here from Mr. Anderson.
Okay, I did kind of address that up in Traverse City, Michigan. This is definitely growing up there. Strip malls, kind of like, guess what you have here, like our Heritage Park and so forth, are installing these in cities like Traverse City. All the businesses share the cost. The cost of that charger is kind of including your monthly rent. So the poor barber shop's not footing the bill for an entire charger or two. It's split amongst all the businesses. So they'll stop, they'll shop, they'll have a dinner, go somewhere else. And there's also signs posted that allow the hours that you're allowed to be there. And there are certain hours that were closed, your car can't be here after 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So some business, and that's a private property owner type issue, but some businesses are doing that.
Sorry. Follow up?
Yeah, I wasn't really actually concerned about the cost to the building to the owner. Well, I'm more concerned about if there's a parking spot there that's loitering, you know, it's sitting there being vacant, you know. And I want more customers coming into my place instead of somebody just sitting out here for three hours or four hours.
Right. Again, I think it's probably a property owner issue. They may say, put up a sign, you need to be on the site if you're going to use the station. But we can look and see what, if anybody's actually regulating that from a municipal side.
You're going to come back with some more information? All right. We have another...
Yes. So dated February 26, Jill, you might want to stay up there. The zoning discussion on semi-trailers as storage. Yes. So it's been a minute since, this has been in your packets numerous times, at least twice, I know. But we haven't had Jill here to kind of discuss what she had found that would kind of address the semi-trailers as storage. Do you need a copy?
Yeah, that was an interesting discussion that you all had. So we understood that the concern that was discussed was whether, was about shipping containers and semi-tractor boxes and whether those could be under that, or skirting that shipping container standards that we just created at the end of last year or beginning of this year, I guess. So there's a couple of different places relating to our semi-trailers and the similar vehicles. We've got the definition of building, which is really interesting because the definition explicitly says it includes semi-trailers, vehicles situated on a parcel and used for the purposes of building and similar structures. And then we also define commercial vehicles. And so those are vehicle bearing or required to bear commercial license plates. It also is defined to include semi-trailers and it talks about all the different kinds of those. And then we get into the use standards for the parking and repair vehicles. So that's section 4.50. We're talking about inoperable vehicles and vehicle parts. So that, to me, is, if it's just a trailer component without the wheels, and I think that was one of your concerns, that, to me, is easily, it has to go into an enclosed building because that's clearly inoperable. And then we have under, further under there, there's a specific prohibition on the parking of semi-tractor trucks or trailers unless it's just for construction. And then we've got the parking standards too, section 5.15, on parking and loading and unloading standards. The use of semi-trailers for storage purposes on the premises for five or more consecutive days is prohibited. So I feel like in all of those sections, we're pretty well covered for that specific concern.
Jeremy, Walmart.
We're on it.
Construction they were doing, is that allowed or not allowed?
They, so as long as they have an active building permit, yes, they can have the storage containers out there. This, what Jill's talking about is if it was like a residential lot that had brought one in and then just dropped it on the property. But if they have an active building permit, yes, you are allowed to have that.
I just wanted to bring up for the reason I brought that up.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Chairman, if may.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah. I didn't have time to email this to you, but sitting in a driveway in a completely residential neighborhood in Hickory Hill Farms over off Cook Road is a semi-trailer that's been parked there for two weeks.
Okay.
I drove by on the way here and it's finally moved, but it sat in this guy's residential driveway. All of his other cars are parked in the street because his driveway's with a 53-foot semi-trailer in it. I don't know what it was moving, but it was over two weeks.
And just so everyone is aware, I have control over code enforcement now. So if you have any issues, please call me, email me, and we can get things done quick.
That ordinance fits the question's concern, I guess, that I have. So I'm good with that.
So you're good? You're satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Perfect.
That one comes up next month, Mr. Chairman?
No, that's...
Don't have to do anything.
No, that one was just for discussion.
Mr. Banderski?
If Jeremy has responsibility for code enforcement, what about these tractor trailers that sit over here in Heritage Park parking lots?
That is something we're aware of as well. We're working on it. It's not as simple as it sounds to get them removed. We're working with the police department. But just know, like I said, it's something that is being addressed. It's not moving as quickly as I would like, let's just put it that way, but it is being addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify something. So a semi-trailer could be considered a building or like an accessory structure and would have to meet setback requirements and that sort of thing. But, so you could have, so for semi-trailers, you have really two categories. You could have ones that are used as a building and then one are basically used as semi-trailers.
Yeah, it's a strange standard. It's a strange definition to include it. But it clearly isn't allowed to be parked anywhere. So I don't know how, in what scenario we would allow something like that as a building.
Well, we've got it defined under the building.
Right. But I'm saying, I can't imagine a time in which we would allow it.
No.
Serve as a building. But it's, as opposed to being like a vehicle necessarily only.
And maybe we should just eliminate it from the section under...
Under the definition?
Finding building?
We could.
Gee, I guess I generated some...
Jeremy, just a question for Jill, Mr. Chairman. The language that we just passed for not allowing storage containers, I understand that it's a tractor trailer, but as soon as you take the wheels off of it, in my opinion, that's a storage container. And we don't allow those now, period, the end. And we have language that says that, right?
Right.
Okay. So that is, if my thought process is right, Dolores, I think that would satisfy that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Hoffman?
And also, I think what you were also saying was, if it's on there, the wheels are off, we now consider it a building, it has to have approval, we're not going to approve it.
Right.
That's why the language that stay there is, in my opinion...
Right. And then it's also in our, inoperable vehicles should be stored inside an enclosed building.
Right.
Which it would be if it didn't have wheels on it.
Right. So it falls under that. So, yeah, I'm good with it.
Well, if it doesn't have wheels, it's not a vehicle. It doesn't have wheels, how is it a vehicle? No axles, no wheels. It's not a vehicle.
Hover.
Oh, you said axles.
It's not a vehicle. It's a storage container. It's a shipping container. But if it doesn't have axles or wheels, it is not a vehicle. If it's not a motor, it's not a vehicle.
Mr. Chairman?
Code enforcement would...
Definition of commercial vehicle, though. The definition of semi-trailer, under commercial vehicle, a definition for semi-trailer says includes flat beds, stake beds, roll-off containers, tanker bodies, dump bodies, and full or partial box-type enclosures. It's all the parts.
Good luck, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson, did you have something you still...
No, no, just, is that tired?
Mr.?
I would like to make a motion to, from the definition of a building, to strike the words, "semi-trailers, comma, vehicles."
What item are you looking at? Under building?
The definition for a building. The italicized words, fifth line down, strike "semi-trailers, comma, vehicles."
So could your RV become a building?
They are no longer a building then?
If I could.
So the issue here is that we're having trouble with blight, right?
Right.
I see that what's in place now helps us control the blight. I don't see anybody coming to us and saying, hey, you're not allowing me to do something that I want to do, which would encompass maybe removing things from control and things of that nature. I think we should leave it the way it is. I think it's a little overkill. But I would be more concerned about the overkill if we had residents coming to us and saying, hey, we're being restricted. And I don't think we're having anybody coming and saying we're restricted. We have people coming in and saying, hey, get rid of the blight. So I'm comfortable with the way it's written. Even though it's a little overkill, it's what the residents are asking for. My thing.
Comments? Ready to move on?
Well, there's a motion. There's a motion on the, there's a motion on the floor.
Is there a second?
Just a comment. I think since this is going to come back to us anyway for further discussion, I know there's a motion on the floor, but it seems to me maybe that's a little premature and we're going to have more discussion on this whole issue.
I don't think, that's not the intent. We're, if we, if, I don't think we're going to leave it for now and then, unless Mr. Yancho's motion goes through, then it would come back for more discussion next month. Okay. Right? Is that, Jill, is that, you understand? Okay.
So first question is, is there support for Mr. Yancho's motion? Nothing against Mr. Yancho.
I withdraw my motion.
All right, thanks. Good to move on?
I think so.
Next item would be committee reports. Ms. Hugo?
We did discuss putting on the next agenda meeting in a couple of weeks, changing the board meetings to 6:00 PM, so that will be on the agenda at the next meeting. I, however, will not be at the next board meeting, maybe the next two board meetings. And I will not be at the next planning commission meeting. I'm having hip surgery next week. So I'll be out of commission for a little while.
Throw you in.
I mean, I did just pick up a walker from Dr. Reardon. But other than that, I have nothing to report.
About zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes.
Address, Ms. Hugo, you made a comment earlier about the fire chief coming in and giving you some information.
Yes.
To me, that would be, if there was anything else like that, that would be good things to bring to us and just let us know. Because we learn three hours and six hours from your comments.
Sure. Okay.
Is there anything from zoning Board of Appeals?
We haven't had a meeting in probably six months.
If I may, you know what that means?
That means the ordinance...
That means we're doing our job.
Exactly. That means these ordinances are working and there's no reason for variances.
Yeah.
Everybody, come on.
From a site plan review standpoint, we had this afternoon, evening, JP Sullivan's distribution site plan, preliminary site planner review at Enterprise Park. We were given approval with a few minor comments and then it would come back to Jeremy for a final review on that. Basically Beer Distributor. We didn't allow any outside storage. They actually made a building big enough they can park their vehicles inside and not have a bunch of stuff sitting outside. So that was good to see. That's all we've had.
Couple of months for that too.
Yep. Anything else from planning?
I do have one announcement to make. I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but my assistant, Maria Brown, has officially declared for retirement. 30 years of experience, a lot of institutional knowledge. She's going to be with me for the next few months and probably retiring the first couple of months of 2024. So we're going to start the process of trying to replace all of that institutional knowledge. We'll post for internal candidates first and then hopefully we have a couple of people that would apply. And if not, then we'll have to go outside and hopefully we can, Maria has given us enough time to where she will stay on and she'll train that new person, whoever it may be, to get them acclimated and I can hit the ground running with them.
Anything from Giffords Webster? No, I don't.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Banderski.
There's no other comments? I would make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at 8:11.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Banderski to adjourn the meeting. Support with Mr. Anderson. All those in favor, signal by seven aye.
Aye.
Aye.